There you go.
Yeah, thank you, son.
Alrighty, I call to order. Meeting of the Ocean Shore Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, August twenty second. The time is two fifteen P M. I will start with a roll call. Commissioner Booker. Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Barr. Commissioner Schultz. Commissioner Lawless. Alrighty. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Second? There we go. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular City Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting on our page twenty twenty three? Carrie move, seconded?
Mark seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alrighty. The one said aye. Well, I know. Alright, so we're gonna start with pre-meeting public comments. Any public comments on the move?
No.
Before we get going on some new, some old business and new business, wanna remind everybody that next Tuesday, the Walking and Biking and Ocean Shores Subcommittee of the Planning Commission will meet next Tuesday, August twenty ninth at two P M. It'll be the first of several meetings. The next meeting will probably be in an evening. Cause we've already had people on technical cities and they'd like your opportunity to attend and they work and stuff like that, so. We will look at doing that meeting following this one. And the purpose of meeting is just to bring your ideas and start throwing stuff on the table that we can bring forward. Before we get into our long-term project of reviewing the, of aligning the zoning code with a comprehensive plan, we have one bit of new business, which is the non-accessory structure maximum size. So on page five of your agenda packet is the non-accessory standards and application procedure in accordance with seventeen fifty dot one one five. If you look at paragraph B, it says, "Non-accessory sheds may not exceed eighty square feet in area in twelve feet in height." For everybody who doesn't remember going down this path, by definition, a non-accessory structure occurs on a site that doesn't have a principal structure, i.e. a house. So what basically talking about is camp law. Is the only place a non-accessory structure occurs. What has happened is there's been the permit office, somebody came in and said, "I can't fit my paddleboard in an eight by ten shed." Standby paddleboard. Which is, you know, come to think about it, it's possible that maybe eight by ten isn't big enough. So the mayor's asked us to look at that and it's gonna be on the agenda next week on what we think, what we think about increasing the maximum allowable size by non-accessory structure on a camping lot. So, open for discussion. So the two obvious ones, so you know, would be eight by twelve, which is ninety-six and ten by twelve, which is one twenty.
They're, they're up eighty square feet with a maximum height of twelve feet. How long are paddles?
Well, but the issue is the standards you get, and I actually looked, cause I'm crazy, from Old Hickory and top shed and old people in Lowe's, most of them are not twelve feet. I understand we said you could go twelve feet. There are a couple out here that are almost that. The single shed roofs, where they have the big slope front to back, like twelve in the front, and they're going back to, on a, on a four twelve picture, going back to like eight in the back. Uh, so it's just. Is, I'm talking about where the eighty square feet came from. Does anybody have a thought as to what we were trying to do originally? Just not have people living there, I guess, on their camping sites.
Well, I think that was it. I think they're trying to limit what you're gonna put in there. Because people do put, we're not supposed to have power in there, but I think there's two sheds around that have refrigerators in it.
Non-accessory sheds. You're not supposed to have power or plumbing by code. But the question is, is, and so for me, I understand, but I'm also trying, what's just between eighty, ninety-six and one twenty? I mean, a twelve by ten, when I drove down the road, it shows Boulevard, and there is an eight by ten. Then there's one that's way bigger on the left, I don't know where that came from. It's an old factory that's like huge on a camping lot, but probably was ungraded.
It used to be hundred and twenty?
No, well, I don't, I don't know. Really? Why would it go down to eighty? So, I mean, this is something that we just asked to look at is, you know, if you have a camping lot, you wanna leave stuff. We already tell you, you gotta pull your trailer in and out, you can't leave it there. So, I mean, discussion on eighty, ninety-six, one twenty. Margaret thoughts, sir?
I, I don't see. Yeah. I, I don't care. I think one twenty's fine. I mean, I know when I had my shed built, um, I had a choice, but I had a house. So that's different than a lot. But I, I don't know why, in my mind, you know, eight, you know, eight by ten, eight by twelve, or ten by twelve? Ten by twelve? That's, that's fine with me.
I kind of agree, because I mean, if if people are gonna do these little things like put power in it, the size doesn't matter, right? If it's eighty square feet or a hundred and twenty, they're still gonna do it. So the size, I don't think really matters.
Yeah, and you know, had, and I've got a lot now. If I was gonna do something with it, I, and I had the choice, I, I might consider, again, as we talk about these things, I might consider a larger one versus a smaller one, knowing, well, not knowing what I might do with that lot going forward. What I have a vision of in twenty twenty-three, I may change that vision in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and now I have some growth. If I, if I just build, well, I can do an eight by ten, and then I need more space. Now I'm kind of stuck.
I, I think one of the other considerations were probably to take it down, like people camping, they gotta have a reasonable amount of stuff in their shed. That thing, but also the thought was maybe that people, you would use a shed for overflow sleep.
Right. And again, you can do the same on eight by ten, but again, it's like more, more possible than ten by twelve. I got it.
But you could always, I mean, you can still bring a tent on, so as long as you've got a contained unit there, does it matter?
And I don't know. I've seen a lot of sheds on a lot of different properties that have sleeping quarters available. Um, I'm sure that even if it's smaller was to recruit them.
Cause by code, you're not supposed to hook up to electricity or plumbing.
But we don't actually say you can't sleep, sleep in your accessory structure anywhere, which is why.
I would think if you could, it would be the same rules as, as a tent. And if you have a tent on the lot, you have to have a contained unit there as well. So you have to have an RV on the lot as well as tents, and they're allowed, I think, only seven days.
Four? One twenty?
Yeah.
Blair, any thoughts?
I can enforce any of it. I mean, that's, that's simple. I mean, that's, that's, you know, community legislation and it's easily enforceable, so I, I don't have an idea.
And this actually came on a permit office, no, your office. Somebody went in, tried to get the right thing, get, get a permit, put their non-accessory shed and discovered that it was too small. And discussion I had with all the reporters, I was talking with Joy and Environment, and one of the reporters said, she said, "Okay, I'll fix the car." And I said, "Well, I don't know, twelve feet by five feet?" She goes, "Well, what can you fit in here?" I said, "Oh, okay, I got you." It's, you know, a grill. You know, you're, you know, look at what we have stored. Do you really wanna ask people to haul that back and forth in their camper every time? That's sort of what brought it to me, is when you actually look at what eight by ten is. So, somebody wanna make a motion to change the size? Mark?
I motion we change it to one hundred and twenty square feet.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Look at business today.
I'll make sure we give you credit for that. Alright, um, this one's gonna be a little bit different than normal, because Vina's here, she's given us a whole bunch of comments. I have incorporated some of them, and usually we do public comments at the beginning and the end. But there are a couple of comments that we haven't received that may need clarification as we go. So is there any objection to sort of asking Vina, who's right behind me, to clarify her comments as we go through some of these? No, I just wanna make sure one thing was happened on this side. Not a normal procedure we use for public science in a meeting, so. Alrighty, the first issue, and I get this on page six, is the purpose and guiding principles. On page seven, we made this comment, and the way it works is you have to go to page eight, once I figure out how to do this with Doby to actually look at that. First comment was, "No, wasn't adopted to June of twenty twenty-two, you're right." But the title on it is still twenty twenty, so I just revert the official title.
Yeah, but there's an implication to having it be, having it be late. But that's okay.
Yeah, there is, and I don't, I got it.
I know.
And so, Vina's second comment is, "We should update and finalize approved part of the change development regulations." I agree with you. And we'll look at that and see how we could possibly do that. Um, that will be hard to update the comprehensive plan, but.
Can I say nothing about that?
Go ahead, Vina, go ahead.
So from my interpretation of what I've read and said, actually, the comp plan is supposed to be updated first, then you do the developmental, development regulations. And by you going from the specific to the general, you're making it much harder, because you're gonna, you keep changing the specifics, but you don't have the general picture. So I, you know, that's in the GMA, and I, I understand about partial planning. My encouragement is for the city to start thinking about opting into the growth management act. I know that's not a topic of discussion today, but I'm just saying. So that's why, you know, I, I'll comment on, on what you've put on paper, but I think you're approaching the problem with the, uh, the revisions from the wrong end of this telescope.
And I for one, understand your input and take it, but why, we took the input as the last approved comprehensive plan as the starting point.
I know, but that was based on twenty fourteen information.
But we're saying, no. I got it. So we're not debating it, but what we're saying, we view the process as using the general in the approved comprehensive plan to get into the specific.
But we're headed into another update, so let me just say, twenty twenty-five is when the, uh, update, uh, grant funding starts for the deadline that is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Okay? So this is why I'm saying, if you're gonna focus on the twenty twenty comp plan, which is really was supposed to be done in twenty eighteen, which is based on information on twenty fourteen, we're already ten years, you know, in a year of evaluating what has happened to the city. You know, we already know the impacts of B one zoning and what, what happened with pyramid zoning. So that's why I think you need to look at the total picture and then create the zones that reflect, uh, that vision in light of, you know, House Bill one-ten and all those other twenty twenty-three revisions to the R C Ws. Okay, but the first focus is the comp plan, in my opinion.
And we, I completely understand what you said, and we're working that, and was recommended, we looked at, for a line, um, and we actually haven't, we haven't had to work some of this. And then we've also got your note on the looking back versus forward. I think that's sort of just notes for guiding principles that we'll look at going forward. And that's really where we're at on that. Here we go, pyramid zoning. Uh, remove all R uses from B one, B two, and B three zone. That's something we're certainly gonna look at. If we get into the B one, B two, B three zone, it's a huge issue. So, and all of these things you talked about, um, that is really something that's bigger than the planning commission. And I'm not sure how we address this with city government. We, we are trying to deal with the effects of historical periods on manage them going forward in the future, and one of the things I think we're gonna have to do is, at some point, and I talked to the mayor about this today, sort of have a, a mid-course discussion with city government on what we're gonna do on this. And it's probably gonna happen, it's certainly hit the B one, B two, B three areas, because it's a real tie-up on how we look at that. Cause we, when we went through the, the, the downtown corridor, we clearly said, "No residential downtown corridor," good thing. While the city struggles with our affordable rental housing, most of the affordable rental housing is in the current B one district. So we gotta figure out how to manage that going forward. Do we say no residential, and I'm particularly looking at the Menard, that interior loop in that area? Well, there's a lot of, um, apartment complexes in some of those other areas. And so it's just something that we're gonna have to struggle with as we go forward. It's certainly the good thing to do if we say no residential in business districts, but the reality is there's not a lot of other opportunities for affordable rental housing. So that's just something we're gonna have to work with going forward. There's no residential.
Yeah, but you can add a different zone.
Yeah, that's what we look at, exactly what we're gonna look at.
Yeah, so. But I would definitely, you're on the right track, I think, in getting rid of residential as the B zone.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you can do that without calling in pyramid zoning.
And that's one of the specifically set in the challenge.
And it's not a taking, as long as there's no applications before the planner.
Yeah, and that's definitely what we looked at. We used the example of where could you build a Walmart? Where's a unused commercial area? You know, there, I think our vision going forward is there are pieces of this town, we would like to say are commercial-only in the future going forward, because if we don't, they're gonna become overrun. Also, what's been the real driver of the loss of a lot of the available commercial B one, B two is, uh, the market desire for transit lodging. And we, we have to recognize that it's a reality. So what I think we're doing here is looking at acceptable, acceptable, perhaps more accessible areas to do transit lodging in some of the existing high-density isolated zones, which aren't in the middle of the single-family zones, where the largest objection to transit housing is and always will be. Transit lodging, you know. We could do transit lodging on another ballot. How many times has it been on the ballot, Horn?
Twice.
Twice. And it hasn't come close either time, I don't think. I think it's been like over sixty-five percent rejection of transit lodging.
Well, the, when the planning mission did the transient housing, uh, the council didn't even vote on it.
Yeah, and the last time, well, last time we think proposed, south of, no, east of Ocean Shore Boulevard, right? Basically, Sandown, um, Ocean Boulevard, east side.
The last proposal was, yeah, west of, west of, yeah. The Ocean Shores Boulevard and south of Marine View Drive, right?
Right, yes. And that was a tiny piece that couldn't get through. And so, what we're looking then is perhaps understanding that, what's a, what's a, what's another opportunity? We've already talked about a few, looking at the map. The old R eight, R nine, R seven, eight, nine, maybe piece in R three, R four. That's kind of what we're looking at, to sort of take the pressure off while doing that sort of stuff. So, um, any more input on the challenges? I don't think we have them today. Is it true? Now, some of the meat of the comments, and it's kind of hard, cause you're flipping sort of back and forth. But Vina's comments, and I've incorporated some of them, thank you very much for them. Oh, no, the last thing is, I don't know if we have comments on it, is the number of zones. So I wanna go to page twenty-four, before we do anything, just to see, yeah, page twenty-four of the packet, which lists current zones we're working through. And what I've done is, I was reminded the tables are sometimes easier. Maybe we just use the table down below, that we sort of rack and stack these.
Good idea.
And so now, what we're looking at is, we've already done and voted on the R L, low-density residential, single-family residential.
What about the I R C?
We, we, we've looked at that, and I think we're sort of not ready to say duplexes everywhere in this town. And actually, there is almost no R two in this town, when I looked at the map. There's almost zero R two land. So almost R one and it jumps to R three. And I'm really weird that we have an R two zone. Marshall, do you know of any R two?
The homeless was also, the homeless situation is also assigned to R two. That was one of my comments. What do you have to do with that?
Yeah, that needs to go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, we're good. So, that's kind of what we're looking at there. So, we've done that, R L. We drew a piece on a map where we might consider low-density mixed use. East side, Ocean Shore Boulevard, basically, was from Beach Drive up that area. Yeah. It's, is an opportunity, and we'll get to that probably next meeting, because it'll be pretty simple. Take the R one, the R L, and add transit lodging like commercial. We're working on R M, which takes R two, R three, R four, and we're working at R M M, which is medium-density mixed use, which is the top of page twenty-five. We haven't gotten there yet, but talking and feeling our way through this, it feels like, um, almost high-density will end up being mixed use. I mean, looking at the map the other day at home, I didn't see a lot of high-density areas, I would say, that'd be high-density residential, but. And we're again, we're looking at that great big Greenview, Fairview. It's sort of the biggest remaining unused high-density that's undeveloped. I, I can't think of anything else. Can you, Marshall, where we've got any R four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? Not really. So that's what we're all about, all here, so. So for now, let me all be high-density slash mixed use. And we've done the downtown corridor, we'll look at that one more time. This one will be interesting, because we do have five or six existing transit lodging in the downtown area, the other day looking at it. So we have to figure out how to deal with that. Retail, commercial, general, commercial, and resort tourist. And the opportunities here are, as we get into the starting thinking about exactly the issue we talked about. And the downtown corridor getting, you know, eliminating residential, or pure residential is a great move. Whether it be new or when you hit the downtown corridor, we got into all those issues of, um, all the apartments and all this sort of stuff in there. It is really not a lot of other apartment areas. What isn't listed in here, I just realized, is I was also reading the nineteen seventy-seven Ocean Observer, when they just announced the opening of the Rain Street area for mobile homes. We're gonna have to figure out how to deal with what's currently R six M or something like that, if you remember what it's called. Um, yeah, something like that. I think it's called R six M. So we have to look at that, and that's gonna take some real thought, because that'll be interesting when we do that. So that's sort of where we are, and I'll get rid of the bullet list and go to the table, and we can sort of advantage that and maintain it as we go through here. At the end, and we'll do it at the end, and it's gonna be a very painful talk, and we'll start talking definitions. Alright, so on page twenty-six is the R M medium-density residential. We do have comments on it, and I've incorporated many of them. The comments start on page eleven. And I can walk through the comments. First one being R one usage permitted in all use in the R L zone. Is it pyramid zoning? Yes. That's the comment, and that is I'm open for discussion. If anybody else on the board that's important wants to have a discussion about, because we already talked about this, do we have do we wanna say you can't do single-family building in the R M zone? That's a difficult thing to say, seeing as most of these, many of these are over half-built, single-family. I understand we don't have to allow it go forward, but really hard, and this is sort of the check that we need to make from the city government, and I don't know how we do that. Is there really the stomach to say no more single-family residential in the medium density? Thoughts on that then?
Well, we did the comp plan, we meant to do that, but didn't do it. To be real truthful, I mean, we want to eliminate pyramid zoning everywhere. And we did it in the, in the commercial areas, but we did not do it in the residential, for whatever reason. It just, we screwed up. And, and there we had, you moved about a conversation about it. And, and the idea was we need to protect those properties, so that they can be multi-family use property, and, and we're losing those by these single-family homes.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, exactly. I think if we don't, we're just gonna end up with the same mishmash and worse. So at some point, somebody's gotta be brave enough, well, what?
Let me, let me give you the counterpoint to that, though. What we're looking at, though, is opportunities to do smaller lots with single-family homes. So one of the things we've talked about as a group was taking an R M, which is current three, four, five, subdividing it to either two duplexes or four small single families. I mean, here's my, and I wanna do this devil's advocate, and I know she's sitting on my shoulder like the angel, to tell me, "Oh, we're here."
You don't have me.
No, so my counterpoint to that is, there is no current or foreseeable future market for multi-family homes in Ocean Shore. So, when this, when this place was I heard this discussion from someone today, you know, the founders viewed this beautiful residential mid-century atomic community with a, you know, a big Chevy or a big Cadillac and everything, and all of that.
That's sort of the ten H O A.
This was all viewed to be a, you know, predominantly a single-family residential area, which I understand. What we were trying to do in the R Ms, and we'll get there in the R Hs, is allow middle housing and more affordable owned housing by allowing a subdivision, which we said we would do with the comprehensive plan, with the smaller lot sizes. But really, as a group that restricting that subdivision to the R M, which again, two, three, four, allows us to maintain the character of the R L, which is a single family. So if we say no single-family dwellings, then what do we do about that goal? Just a discussion. I understand drawing the line at the side, I understand doing that, but I, I don't see a huge push and need for multi-family housing. Maybe I, I don't see the future, but there's not a whole lot of them getting built in the past ten to fifteen years.
Would that change if the lot size, if we, we made the, the subdivision changes within a lot that is currently a single-family lot? Would there be opportunity if we changed that and say, "Okay, I can divide my lot and do a duplex instead of just a single-family home on it?" So if, if we change the lot size, then does the dynamic change on the discussion?
It does. But it also changes the character of the R L areas, which are, you know, one of the attractions of Ocean Shores is the abundance of single family. I hate to say it, but it is.
Sure.
Um, this, I, I consider it part of the basic nature and character of this town. So I'm just trying to figure out, and this is a question I've had to ask a lot of people, a lot of issues, it's like, is there truly, do we anticipate a future need for a lot of, say, multi-family only housing? It's been sitting out there for fifty years and isn't getting built on. It's one of my thoughts. And all we think that's getting built on, if we can go through the map and look at any one of these, is it's ninety percent single-family homes getting built in the higher densities currently zone areas. I see very few, and the ones that are getting built are actually common law subdivisions. So it's people building two, threes, or the ones on point, run on common law subdivisions, those triplexes, or those rentals. So it's people building two, threes, or the ones on point, brown common law subdivisions, those triplexes, or those rentals.
Those are rentals.
Okay, so that's what I'm getting.
Yes. Now I have two under construction on Ocean Spray right now too.
Are two on those?
Those are. They're uh, a six and an eight.
Six and eight, absolutely.
Yeah, and they're not being built for common law subdivision. So those will be true multi-family medium density.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Jason.
Does the city follow up on whether those that you approved for. Common law for the underlying land to be subdivided? Do you guys follow up to make sure that was done?
We do. The subdivision comes through the planning department.
Because the way they're being numbered is you have the same house number, A, B, C. So those don't have unique addresses. And I've been wondering.
Yeah, I consulted with Grace Harbor County on the addressing to see what was commonly being used in that. As long as it's a unique address, um, they didn't have a problem with it. Whether it's the same number with an A, B, C or a different number, they didn't distinguish between the two as long as each one was unique. They have separate parcel numbers.
Okay.
I mean, so go ahead. I mean, could we, I I think we're all in kind of agreement. So the multi-family lots, could we do the wording such that it could be a multi-family lot, whether it's a common law? Or subdivided into smaller lots?
Yeah, I don't have to do that. Well, I mean, the common law subdivision is in there now. We'll get there. That's in about seventeen fifty.
Yes.
And that applies to any lot.
Yeah, but but then add that you could. It's also allowed to be subdivided to make smaller lots, but of individual.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're looking at doing here, on the, on the table over here where we did the lot size, seven, seven twenty divided, two ways divided, four ways. The issue is, and. The issue is the statement that you're allowing all RL activities in the RM zone. That's the real issue and do we. Say no more single families. I mean, one of the ways you could say it. No more single families on lots of. You know, by lot size.
Thirty-two hundred square feet or more.
Well, yeah, no single families unless the lot is subdivided at thirty-six hundred square feet. I mean, you could say that. Basically, what you've then now done is you said you get a two subdivision. I mean, it's what I'm trying to get discussion into here, what the advantage of that. I just. In my head. I'm not pressured. I don't know the future. I just don't see a screaming demand for multi-family homes.
But I think if if we do something with the lot size, it provides the opportunity. Right now, I agree with you three thousand percent that I don't see given. The lot size, again, it's written that there's going to be a lot of. You know, multi-family. If we change the lot size, then I think that provides some opportunity. To subdivide for that.
But not for multi-family. I mean, the the multi-families that are going on right now are being done on full seventy-two hundred or larger lots. So the the six by and four by on Ocean Spray, that's actually a big lot, the six by is on. I think it's bigger than seventy-two hundred, but that's just weird enough.
Yeah.
Um, so what I'm saying, where the market is allowing. Where the market is. Supporting multi-family, it appears to be happening in very few locations. The, you know, Marine View triplexes. Rentals. Obviously, there was a need for that. The question, I guess. By prohibiting. Future single family. We know all the issues and I know they have a right to come to the zoning meeting if they bought the lot. And say, no, we don't want to do that.
Does make a condition. Not up to them.
I know it's not up to them. I completely get that. You bought a house, you bought in a zone and you don't get to. You don't get to participate, you don't get to. Why what the city is going to do. But it's also, you know, for the good of everyone. Um, what do you do? I mean, Thor, what do you think, Thor? Who's who's good at this for? I mean, what for?
Um, considering a primitive R one usage in multi-family zone.
I don't, that's what I'm struggling with. I don't see why we would have to do that.
I've never had somebody come in and say, I want to buy a multi-family lot. They don't want to buy a lot to their. Build a house on. And if we're going to talk about. I mean, commercials zones are different. Permit zoning. Dogma is if you hear somebody zoning pure as I suppose, but as far as practical. Point of view goes. Most people bought lots so they could build a house, or they could build a multi-family if they wanted. That'd be fine, yeah. But when you tell them, oh, by the way, you can't build a house like you planned. We can't say, well, it's none of your business.
Well, we can, but we, well, you could say it, but it's not good.
This is why the con plan has to be done first.
It is not. So this is a debate.
But you you're going into a thing where you're gonna end up. Not being able to make a decision.
We are aligned with the con plan. It's not going to be, because it's a debate. So, you know, we're gonna have to pretty soon shut off a public comment on this debate every.
Station is also not to do anything.
What?
Station also is not to do anything.
And if we don't do anything, then we're going to continue to lose. Commercial lots to transit logic.
I'm just talking about uh, residential, commercial.
Yeah, we're going to continue to lose that, but. The thought was to open up. Pieces of residential. Districts for A subdivision and B transit logic. Subdivision with the intent of smaller, more affordable middle housing, which we've been asked to do when we were looking at. So again, not voting today on this, but next week we are going to vote on the RM. And so please come back with that one big comment and we beat this around a million times. I know you beat it around the pump plant.
I did.
And did you get anywhere?
Well, we thought you did.
Well, you proposed a con plan.
Yeah.
Well, the city adopted a con plan, so that's where we're at. So the permitted uses. You know, for now, and we'll make a decision next week finding an RL, RM.
I know you can't do the updating with fans. We don't have a road to the deadline.
Read it, please. I'm gonna have to stop. This is not a requirement of public, I'm going to allow you to interact and go over that, okay?
I'm not trying to be an adversary.
I have the comment on RL. Duplexes in the RL zone. At this point, does anybody want to allow duplexes in the RL zone? I don't see the advantages of this in this style. And I got it. I understand the R O C and the I B C both building code. Now, zero, I didn't look at. Okay, I I did change it, zero, nine, zero. We missed, if we go through. On page six, twenty-six, thirty-two. I think I missed a conditional use all the way to seventeen oh nine, I'll fix. Um, seventeen oh four. I have an include here. We'll talk about a definition of public and semi-public uses at the end. We do need to add that. It needs to be done. Um, what was interesting was in. Row house and other common law residential developments with the underlining, we actually added that from the three. Into the RM, because R two did not have row house and common law subdivision. You probably never run into it because there's no R two. For very little.
Yeah. Is that section at the, in a triangle of? I I thought we had two small sections of R two. I could be mis.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it. See, very small.
Yeah, there is. It's um, it's the sand color and there's a little bit on the backside of Cresshire Loop. Uh, the next little court north and then the triangle. That encompasses Marieview Drive, South Sand Dune, and Ocean Shore Boulevard. So there's two small sections.
And and those make no rhyme or reason as to where they are and why they're there.
Yeah, I can't explain it, but that's where they're at.
What was interesting and we talked this was row house and common wall. Subdivision was not allowed in R two, and we've added that into all of RM. And homeless services are prohibited in the RM zone. Um, and I've got to go back through the homeless and look to see where it is.
They've changed R two to RM?
Yeah. So we're going to go back and see where homeless is. And. We'll do that and then what we've done is one dwelling structure. That's on the top of page twenty-seven. Minimum lot size and subdivision show flat, three flats or boundary lines are as follows, and then just a table, which is easier to see. And then I picked some titles in here. So other than having one more debate about. RL permissions. And the second look at where homeless is allowed. Is any other discussions we need to have on this first?
Are you on page twenty-seven?
Yeah, I'm on page twenty-seven, yeah.
Um, with respect to the minimum lot size, it's over. Those are not standard before, and so we don't really certain that we're not. Recluding existing uses by these limitations.
What do you mean?
Minimum lot size or minimum density size, what are we talking about?
We're talking about. Minimum lot size for subdivision short flat, replats or boundary line adjustments.
There are a number of lots that are under seventy-two hundred square feet.
Right.
And numbers that are over that, but not quite. Eight thousand up there, where it may be these existing multi. House zoning.
So the point would be is what, what, how I would interpret then, then is if you have a six thousand square foot. Currently R four, then you can only get two subdivision short flat out of it because the minimum is.
Unless you're sure.
Yeah. You see what I'm saying? That's kind of what we're saying. So for the, for the vast majority, and if it's bigger. We have that already. And this is to get at the. Wording that says every lot has to be seven thousand two hundred square feet, and the only way to get around that is to do a common wall subdivision. Which we're seeing everywhere, which is nonsensical. Go ahead.
So does this table allow for the subdivision with a smaller structure size for a single family?
Well, that's the whole purpose.
And and also potentially transient rental?
Yes. And we'll talk about, and what we talked about is, and that would be the RM mixed. It's not this particular zone, because what we looked at was the. R three, the current R three crescent, I call it, that is between Butterclam and Wonachi. You know, I'm talking about.
Yeah.
That's smacked out in the middle of this beautiful single family that's R three with a duplex and a. Triplex in the middle of all of this, that perhaps transit logic wouldn't be appropriate, but in other areas. We've looked at transit logic would be. So that was, that was kind of what drove the RM mix. To add transit lodging and perhaps like commercial. Does that sort of answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to distinguish between the RM and the RM mix.
Yeah, and that's what.
And we're going to allow the smaller lot sizes in the RM mix and subdivision.
Absolutely.
And not in the standard RM.
No, we're gonna allow them in the RM too. Is what we looked at.
Uh, and transient rental in both iterations to just the mix. Okay, alright, thank you. That's the distinction I needed.
The thought we were looking at was. And the only one that we've come up with, drawing circles around right now is that. Butterclam, Wonachi, Cressel. Was when you look at that, even then, if somebody wanted to subdivide and try to fit two duplexes in there, wouldn't be awful. In their residential area. Those lots would be really hard to subdivide for wet hays and for tiny homes and everybody could. But these would again, not for transit rental in this area. That would be for occupation and use. That answer?
Yeah, it does.
Good.
Thank you.
So now we'll move on. Page twenty-eight. All the exact same. And I cleaned it up. We added, ooh, we're gonna mistake here. We added. Transit rentals as a permitted use. There it is, right there, alright, on page twenty-eight. Permitted use, we added E. Transit use, transit rentals. Oh my gosh, I missed it in here. Oh, I guess we didn't. Okay. So on the conditional uses. We have. Light commercial activities that are not detract from the presidential. Such as grocery convenience stand, sandwich shops, and coffee shops. And if you want to do a row house, common wall, residential subdivision, it still requires a. Conditional use permit. But more discussion about this light commercial. I mean. I know we've been trying to say that allows us to provide five opportunities to put. Light commercial in support of the healthy neighborhood concept.
I liked how you got worded here.
And we talked at all about permitted versus conditional, and we said conditional is good. Because it requires you to go through all the public notices, conditional use hearing. And all that input before somebody puts a sandwich shop. In your neighborhood. Thoughts on that then?
I disagree.
Because you weren't here for a lot of this. We went.
I actually watched your review.
Okay, we saw that it made, yeah, originally permitted use, and we said, oh, maybe this should be a conditional use.
I had to speed yourself.
Yeah, multiply. I got it. Again, I need the answer on homeless. The way that's gonna go, and I think that's sort of clean through all of that.
What was the argument about putting transient rentals in conditional uses?
Um, we thought about it, but we thought it was just to maybe to honor us at this point.
Because there are certain things that you would. Want, you know, transit uh. Transient rental, like sprinklers. And things like that that are different. We would want to have, make sure that those happen, that it wasn't just a prescriptive. Uh, approval.
But the, but. The application for transient. Lodging requires an inspection by building official fire marshal to ensure that the building meets the code for. That year.
Yeah, but that's after planning.
Doesn't matter. It's, it's a.
It doesn't.
The building code. Manages what is required by the building code. Marshall, right? Is that kind of?
Yeah, I do not review. I I do not review the planning or the the building. Uh, supplemental. In planning, that gets done in the building department, but prior to construction.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Planning is part of it.
You don't, right?
I I do not.
Right. So if somebody builds a structure and intends to do it as transit lodging, it's upon them to meet the building code for five seconds.
What if they do it after? What if they turn it into a transit, not all intense for them to build?
Then they don't get that permit. Because they have to have an inspection. They can't, basically. They have to retrofit.
And and that's exactly what we're telling them. Make your decision upfront, if that's your intent, because if you make the decision wrong, you'll have to retrofit the building in the future.
Because you will not get a transit lodging permit.
Correct.
Unless you have the proper.
Part, I should be meaning the, yep.
So. The last thing I've got is. The definitions we've been working on. That I'm gonna ask. And that's on page thirty-one. Thirty-two, and I just bring this up because we're going to get into a lot of these very soon. So if you get a chance. Boarding house, hotel. Motel and transit lodging are four interesting definitions that all say something completely different. And. Thor, have you figured out what between a hotel and motel is?
No. Or between the city's definition of transit rental and motel.
I actually got that one for you. The Sat Island commiserated over that. By if you look at transit rental, the very last definition. It's the forbearance of a dwelling. Which we got rid of.
Well, we did, we.
We did get rid of dwelling. So I would have to change that dwelling structure. It says that dwelling structure means the building exclusively for residential purposes, but not including hotel. Or motel units designated for short-term occupancy.
It doesn't have to look like.
What?
It doesn't have to look like.
Transit rental?
Yeah.
Transit rental. We love to, yeah, that's like you've been with it. You're one of them. The transit rental is being a rental or lease, or considered with dwelling for thirty days. It's a dwelling, a house.
So I'm, let's assume that we eliminate permanent zoning and be, be two, be one, be two. But I want to have a rental down there. I want to make it look like a house.
It 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 basically has to be, yeah, a house. And then you can only use it for transit rentals. You can't use it for full-time dwelling.
Who's gonna know?
Yeah, right.
The city calls it now motel. And.
So you want me, us to call all these transit rentals on Point Brown, or tell more talks?
I don't, I don't know, I don't have any idea, but, okay, because it's so confusing, depending on how you apply for something. Like, 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 we built eight of them together. Some the city called motels, some they called dwellings, and there seemed to be no consistency there, but but what we are putting in a code here encourages people to make, to cheat, unless we figure out what we want to actually do with these things. Is there, is there a significant difference between me living in a, in transit rental for sixty days, or anything wrong with that? This quote says maybe, I don't know. Now, we say somebody should not live in a we should not call something that is a long-term dwelling, a transit rental, unless there's going to be various features in it because of more danger, or maybe less danger, we aren't really sure. Though motels have that, frankly, for a new one, certainly.
Transit rentals do.
Yeah, they do too, it doesn't have to.
Right.
For reasons kind of unknown to me, but I'm not going to argue about it. But I do have a concern is, if I'm going to build more transit rentals, let's say, and they're going to look like a house, what the heck?
Looks like what was built on the Point Brown.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe, but we have to say, isn't anything, any dwelling structure that's built in in a mixed use area has to have sprinklers, and they've done that in a lot of municipalities, I know Marysville now, every structure.
Yeah, we're fighting. If you just get away, I work for a couple of that, so we expect it.
Listening to you, Thor, I'm wondering how important this is for our wording to say thirty days or less. I don't find it transient.
It's always been there, and because it set up the long-term rental, which is more than thirty days.
You needed to have a dichotomy between the two, so we can license or not license one or the other, maybe a cutoff point somewhere.
Okay.
Thirty days is.
That's a common thing everywhere. Wherever I've ever been, because I know in Portland, when I tried to get transit rental license, they would let me have one because it was considered a duplex, and you can't use primary residences as transit rental. What happened, they considered it a duplex, so we had to do corporate rental.
Yeah.
I wanted thirty days for it. And the thirty days are very common.
I don't have any, or whatever, I don't want to build a house on my lot in Division Twenty. So, right now I can do it, maybe I wouldn't be able to in people on that yet. But exactly, at what point do I call it one or the other, and and if I want to live in it for five months here, rent it out the rest of time, what is that?
If you took, if you rent it for thirty days, you have to, thirty days or less, it must be for, they need all the requirements of transit rental.
Right, what if I don't, what if I just want to live in it for six months and rent for the next six months? Then it's long-term rental. Maybe, I don't know.
Well, it is, more than thirty days by definition is a long-term rental.
Well, yeah, but what what is the zoning code calling?
Do we even address long-term rentals in the zoning code, or in retrospect?
Is it a commercial use, or is it a residential use?
I don't think so.
Or is it?
Residential.
If it's private, single-family homes, it looks like a sale, I mean, I don't want that to.
So rental.
Yeah, is it a commercial use?
I don't think so.
Okay, in in the back of my mind, there may be a commercial implication in the utility billing aspect of uh even long-term rentals. I I can't remember, for some reason, I'm just throwing that out there for for thought, and I'll check on that.
But I don't, yeah, I I understand where you're going with it, but actually, I don't know where I'm going. But I'm trying to answer.
I just don't want to make our zoning code more confusing than I want it to be.
I know, you can try and pardon off too.
Yeah.
Question, and the transit rental, we didn't have, that's always been there. And when I saw the dwelling, it needs to say dwelling structure, because we got rid of the term dwelling for all the reasons.
So do we, do we require sprinkler systems and duplexes or triplexes or anything like that now?
There's a certain um IBC requirement, I don't know what it is.
Exactly. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to try to quote it.
But there is a requirement, I don't know what it is, and it may be multi-story, and it has to do with fire escapes and all this sort of stuff required, but way back in my building days, the sprinkler requirement, the protection requirement.
They're not required in like the triplex uh that appear, the triplex apartments on Point Brown, those were not required to be sprinkled.
Okay, those were not, and typically, the house we lived in.
Put it in the wire wall, then.
When we lived in Poland, it was a four-story with firewalls, it sprinkled because of evacuation to the third story
Correct.
to get out. That's why it was sprinkled. Apartment complexes often are sprinkled for the same reasons.
Sure.
Unless there's a separate fire for every, so sometimes you go around some of these cities, you will actually see a way to get around the fire code. They build wooden fire escapes off of every, if you've ever seen that, that's often driven by fire code. Um, and so it's, the answer is that it's multi-story structures with longer distances to escape. And a sprinkler isn't just a sprinkler system, it's the annual inspection, there's a maintenance piece, there's a testing piece, I've been there, I'll let it stop on. Never on a four-story home, ever. Okay, so I just want everybody to look at that, I want to look at the public and semi-public uses we're asked to include. But that kind of comes out of the code, there's really no big change. Um, I just added the word would benefit the community, because we never define public and semi-public uses, they're all the way through it. Um, so now, those are the exact lists, if you go to the code, for public and semi-public uses, I just sort of pull the piece of the code and help further describe what a public and semi-public uh usage. Um, again, this came up in town because churches and community centers are always a public, semi-public use that require a conditional use permit, that require a public. Probably not going to do a map walk, unless everybody wants to, because we've done that enough. Um, I will try to promise, like, I will have time to go down to our favorite area, down in the end of Point Brown of that area, and start really looking at lot by lot. Um, anything that isn't residential, as we start looking at doing, uh, what is currently B two, carving out B two or at least down there that are possible to carve out, and may, they may even have existing residential, so any future use would have to be B two. But I know the last two streets on Point Brown are covered, so transit lodging, uh, because those are homes fully built, there's always any lots left to build in there. Around the Colson.
Maybe, if it's Street or.
Yeah.
Marine Court.
Yeah, one of those two.
They're all, they're all filled up.
Yeah, they're pretty much all filled up. So looking at what we have, and then there's some old homes mixed in there, which I didn't realize, two and three-story, two-story family homes right next to the VFW, which is really weird, so carving out that B two section, then if you get a chance and you're driving around or walking, you want to have a good walk, please go down Olympus again, figure out what to do on the canal side of Olympus. Because that's currently zoned.
B one.
B one. And there ain't nothing B one going in there recently.
Maybe there is a proposal for a couple of transient rentals.
I got it, and so that may be an opportunity to.
Mhm, R O M.
There's about eight undeveloped B two lots in that area.
Yeah.
Right now.
Well, nothing developed commercially in there.
No.
So maybe that's an R M. Or or an R one M, but who knows? Because we did say in the RL, there's a lot of transit lodging there, on that little strip that we saw on the park floor, so. Anybody else have anything for the group? Oh.
That'll be here next week.
Yeah, I'll be here, because we're due to be.
Oh, I'm past.
Second chair for the next meeting, sitting to my right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Second, you just great, so all in favor?
Aye.